Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the May 12th, 2025 meeting, the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio, and the time is 5:15. Before we begin, I'd like to request the motion of silence. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience tonight, and those who are out there in the web world. It took a little bit longer in our closed session than was expected, but we appreciate your patience and understanding. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Burrs. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Did we see any other commissioners? We do appreciate Mr. Burrs and other commissioners for all their support in Dare County Board of Education and its schools. Thank you so much for being here. Next, I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting on this beautiful evening. I hope all the moms out there had a wonderful Mother's Day, and we're just glad you're all here. It's so nice to see all your smiling faces. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over for the Pledge of Allegiance to Mr. Emerson Mann, please. Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is approval of the agenda.
Chairman, approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Mr. Bateman. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It's like we've got an agenda to this. This hitch?
No public comment tonight, sir.
No public comments. I'd like to make a few announcements tonight. I'd like to give some dates out for remembering the month of May. May 5th through 9th, which was last week, was our staff appreciation week. Each school was able to have a food truck of their choice, and my understanding, including the central office of maintenance and transportation as well. And it seemed like everyone really thoroughly enjoyed the lunch that was provided by the board, and they appreciated for that service. May 7th was also School Nurse Day. School Communicator Day was May 9th, and our Speech Pathologist Day will be coming on May 18th. And Educational Boss Week, which I use, Georgia.
That's the key.
May 19th through the 23rd. Thank you for all y'all do for our students and staff each and every day. And it was an honor to have these little celebrations to provide that. Next, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, Board members. It's my pleasure to inform you that Ms. Mora Velazquez is currently serving as the Dual Language Immersion Representative on the Foreign Language Association of North Carolina Board for the 2425 academic year. This is a prestigious state-level position within a respected professional organization. Flank Board members play a vital role in shaping the organization's initiatives and operations. In addition to their position-specific responsibilities, they actively contribute to subcommittees and ad hoc committees as needed. Through their service, board members not only stay informed about emerging professional trends, but also advocate for the world language teaching profession in their local communities and throughout North Carolina. As the Dual Language Immersion Representative, Mora played an instrumental role in organizing and securing the DLI sites visited for their spring conference in Greenville, North Carolina. She has participated in flank conferences both as a presenter and as an active volunteer. Her professionalism and knowledge of teaching always reflect positively on the Foreign Language Association of North Carolina. Thank you, Board, for affording the opportunity for her to contribute to this professional organization.
Do something to get pissed.
First Flight High School's head basketball coach and athletic director Chad Williams was honored with the 2425 National High School Coaches vs. Cancer Coach of the Year Champion Award by the American Cancer Society. The Champion Award was first established in 1996 and awarded to the legendary Missouri coach Norm Stewart. The Coach of the Year Champion Award honors coaches nationwide who exhibit exceptional leadership and an unwavering dedication to the fight against cancer. Coach Williams earned this recognition for his outstanding work organizing the Good Guys vs. Cancer Showcase, a premier high school basketball tournament that not only draws top-tier talent, but also unites the community in support of a cause that is deeply personal to him. The Good Guys vs. Cancer Showcase began in February 2018 when Coach Williams' father, Guy Williams Jr., was diagnosed with an extremely rare and aggressive form of leukemia and lymphoma. Under Coach Williams' leadership, the annual showcase has grown into eastern North Carolina's top basketball event, drawing widespread participation and notoriety. Since its inception in 2018, the Good Guys vs. Cancer Showcase has raised over $100,000 to support local families battling cancer and to further the life-saving work of the American Cancer Society. The 2024 showcase grew significantly, with a total of 32 teams from North Carolina and Virginia competing in 24 games over four days. Last year's event raised over $24,000 for the American Cancer Society, a testament to the event's growth and impact. Coach Chad Williams now joins a distinguished group who have earned national recognition for his impact on high school athletics and his dedication to supporting other families battling cancer. Cancer has touched far too many of us, and I consider myself extremely blessed to be sitting here tonight to honor Coach Williams and highlight the work he does for the American Cancer Society. As someone who really enjoys watching basketball, it's incredible to have this number of schools and a level of talent come to First Flight High School every year, and that you include Cape Hatteras and Manio, both boys and girls teams. Me and my dad sat in those stands. And when we did, I was five years old again, and I was watching a basketball coach watch basketball. Last year, the members of my high school basketball team, 1979 Manio High School, sat together, had that tournament, and laughed and enjoyed every minute of it. And I've taken my kids there, like my dad did. You've not only created a legacy for your dad, you've created an opportunity for all of us to make our own memories. I want to thank you. And like I told you multiple times, he's real proud of you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, in case you haven't noticed tonight, there's a lot of people here. We're thrilled, too. Because we get to recognize another team. Ms. Fallon? Going to recognize Ms. Denise Fallon, our Secretary of Director, to recognize some folks in here today.
Mr. Bassnight, I could not be happier to stand before you as a former math teacher and math team coach. I am so happy to share some amazing news with you about our students in Dare County and our mathletes. So there was a regional math competition, and man, did Dare County show up. And when they showed up, they were serious, and we came home with lots and lots and lots of wins with our secondary schools. In fact, every one of them. So I want to share that with you. We've got lots of families and team members here tonight. So we're going to do a couple of things. I'm going to start by recognizing the entire team. And so when I mention your team, I ask that those students stand to be recognized. And then on some of our teams, we had regional winners, and some of those students went on to state competition and won there as well. So I asked that our regional winners and our state winners actually come forward.
Please.
Yeah, and we'll get some pictures. But really, really excited. So our first, again, this was the North Carolina Regional and State Math Competition, and that's held every year in locations across this state. And so in the northeast region, again, Dare County made an amazing showing. Our first group we're going to recognize is our Level 1 team that won first place at the region. And this is the team from Manio Middle School with Coach Melissa Geiger. If those students would please stand. And that's our. And I believe all of these students are taking Math 1 as eighth graders, and when they compete, they compete against all Math 1 students. So go eighth graders, I love it. We had some regional winners from that team. We had a first-place state qualifier, Mr. Alex Midget. If you'll come forward, Alex. Just love you. And Alex actually took third place at the state competition in this level as well, so that's amazing. Yeah. So at the regional awards, our second place was Lucas Bailey, who also went to states and won seventh place there. Thanks, thank you. And then our third regional state qualifier, who achieved 10th place in the state, is Ms. Anaya Gibbs. All right, so now we're going to move on. We're going to do one, okay, go ahead. It's a lot of them, yeah. So our next group, we're going to recognize our next team is our Level 2, first-place winning team from First Flight High School with Coach Tom Hasky. So again, this is Math 2, First Flight High School winning team, please stand. So for Level 2, first place, and a state qualifier who achieved 6th place in the state, Mr. Ben Cortez. Well, Harry Lipcheck, third place at the regional state qualifier and achieved 7th place at the state level. And our third student, you want to stand here or go on up there? Okay. And then Mr. Daniel Trice, who was a state qualifier and participant at the state level. Guys, guys, good. I love it, love it, love it. Math 2. And just so everybody knows, Math 2 is a really hard subject. Really, really hard, so good job, guys. All right, so now let's move on to Level 3. With our first-place winning team from Dare County, Manio High School, coached by Evan Davis, please stand. At the regional level, we had Daisy Brewster, who was a state qualifier. Come forward, please, Daisy. She here? Finnegan Davis, second-place regional winner and state qualifier. And Sarah Marshall Gallup was a regional state qualifier and took 4th place in the state. For Math 3, congratulations. And now their highest level in those math competitions is what's called the comprehensive team, and that's typically your pre-calc and your calc students participate at that level. We do have a first-place regional team for the comprehensive level, and that is Manio High School, coached by Evan Davis. Taking first place for the comprehensive team and the regional competition was Finn Schultz, and a participant at the state level. A state qualifier and participant, Alan Garcia. And Aiden Riggs, state qualifier and participant at the comprehensive level. Congratulations. And our fifth school recognition for our secondary schools in the comprehensive division, taking second place. First and second place, comprehensive. But second place goes to Cape Hatteras Secondary School. Coach Natasha Pharaoh. All right. And we have, taking 3rd place on the comprehensive competition at the regional level, Quinn Pharaoh, and a state participant. In addition to all those team wins, we do have a few students who won at the regional level beyond what we've mentioned so far. So I want to recognize those students as well. From First Flight Middle School, coached by Maria Wise, in the Level 1. We had a state qualifier and participant, Holden Hutspeth. Again, from First Flight Middle School, coached by Maria Wise, another Level 1 state qualifier and participant, Brantley Molton. And from First Flight High School in the Level 3 Division, coached by Tom Hasky, 3rd place state qualifier, and 7th place in the state for Level 3, Mr. Wesley Robinson. So again, congratulations to all of our mathletes. A lot of hard work goes into that to get you on the team to start with, but for Dare County to sweep those regional awards and then go on with all these states is amazing. I've never seen it done anywhere. So congratulations to all our students and to our teachers out there who are teaching math every day and getting it done, and our coaches for giving up their time to prepare these students for that competition. So thank you all, and I think we're going to get a picture. We want our coaches.
I also like to have the two principals that's here tonight, Ms. Rook and Mr. Luciana, if y'all will come forward, please.
Oh, everybody, come on up. I'm so excited. Yeah, go on up there, yeah, I love it. Come on, Caroline, you too, honey. And while we're congregating up front, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Dawn Tillot, who's sneaking by in that pretty pink sweater. She works with our math and science folks, and she was instrumental in putting this together. So Dawn, thank you for that work. Our next recognition this evening is for a very special group of students. To everyone that's here tonight, good evening, and thank you for joining us as we celebrate a year of growth, leadership, and student achievement. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing a very special group of exceptional students who have served as liaisons between their peers and the Dare County Board of Education. These student advisors have demonstrated outstanding communication, insight, and a deep commitment to representing their respective regions throughout Dare County. Their input has helped shape thoughtful discussions and supported decisions that impact the entire school community. Indeed, it is my honor to recognize these student advisors to the Board of Education this evening. Students, in acknowledgement of your service, each student advisor will receive a student board sash and cord to proudly wear during graduation events. And Mr. Chairman, their parents are here this evening, so I'm going to invite them to the podium there with Mr. Bassnight as we recognize them. So we'll start alphabetically with Cape Hatteras Secondary School. First, joining their daughter is John and Nicole Fairbanks, and their daughter is Elizabeth Fairbanks. While Elizabeth makes her way to get her cords, Elizabeth has already earned an Associate in Arts from COA and will actually graduate tomorrow. She plans to attend Clemson University and study electrical engineering. Was it, yeah, I think so, yeah. Next, from Cape Hatteras Secondary School, proud parents Mandy Hagie and Jamie Fuller. Their daughter is Caroline Fuller. Caroline has also earned an Associate in Arts from COA and will graduate tomorrow. She plans to attend UNC Charlotte and study biomedical engineering and neuroscience. Next, we have the students from First Flight High School. Ms. Christina Bowen and Chris Mann are the proud parents of Emerson Mann. Emerson plans to attend UNC Chapel Hill Honors College and study biomedical engineering. Again, from First Flight High School, the proud parents are Brian and Whitney Wilson, and their daughter is Skylar Wilson. Skylar will be attending UNC Chapel Hill in the fall to study political science at a pre-law track. And finally, representing Manio High School, the parents Erin and Matthew Fleckenstein are here for their son Tobias Fleckenstein. Toby plans to attend UNC Chapel Hill to study political science in a pre-law track. Toby also was just recognized not long ago for earning his Eagle Scout. And our final student advisor to the Board of Education is joined this evening by Kara and Greg Sherman and Jessica and David Twyford, and that is Spencer Twyford. Spencer will be attending East Carolina University in their Honors College to study English and secondary education. And just for an added benefit, he will pursue a master's degree in administration and hopes to return to Dare County to work as a teacher administrator. Before we pose for a final photo, I'd like to wish all of our graduates all the best as they embark on the next part of their educational journey. It has truly been my honor to work with all of you, and we will miss you.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, before we take a photo, I want to step back and remind you of our initial discussions about having students involved in the Board of Education. There is no way, and I'm speaking to the public, there is no way we could have anticipated the level of input, the level of thought, and some of the comments that were made back to us that were just common sense about the things that we do. And I know I speak for every member of this board in saying you have exceeded our expectations. You make us excited about the future. We will miss you, everyone, but knowing there's a group that's going to come in that's able to do what you've done for each of us makes us excited about tomorrow. Thank you from Dare County Schools, from our Board of Education, and from myself for being who you were and helping us to be better.
If I may, can I have Ms. Rooks and Mr. Luciana come up, please, with the photo? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to the student advisors. Sounds good to me. Looks like you've got a job to do now, ma'am.
Alrighty, I'm going to be going over the school highlights from my area. First up, Kitty Oak Elementary School. It's been an exciting and enriching season at KHES. The primary students recently enjoyed a vibrant cultural dance performance by the Sakumu Dance Troop, made possible through a generous grant from the Dare Arts Council. The student music program led by Miss Alene Rock and Roll, Led by Miss Alene, Rock and Roll is Here to Stay showcased the talents of 100 students singing and acting to a packed audience. The school-wide Robot Fun Day brought literature and STEM together during specials, offering engaging, hands-on experiences. During Science Night, the fifth grade students took on the role of teachers, leading fun, interactive activities aligned with science standards for peers and visiting families. In celebration of spring, classes across the school participated in egg hunts creatively tied to literacy and science standards. The K through 2 students are also showing their leadership and kindness by adopting upper-grade classrooms to provide encouragement and support as third through fifth graders prepare for the EOG testing. This month, we're highlighting the character trait "peace," helping students grow in emotional regulation and a community awareness. Meanwhile, the staff continues to focus on wellness. Last month's Hydraceon Challenge featured fancy-flavored water stations hosted by Nurse Posco, and this month, they are stepping into the Staff Step Challenge with enthusiasm. KHES continues to foster a joyful, supportive learning community where students and staff thrive. Next up, First Flight Elementary. First Flight Elementary continues to demonstrate the strength of its school-community partnerships through a variety of enriching experiences for the students. This month, they have been proud to collaborate with our PTO, FFES families, First Flight Middle School and high schools, the Killable Hills Police Department, the U.S. Coast Guard, and the Dare County agencies to provide meaningful, real-world learning opportunities. On April 17th, the PTO organized and led the annual Earth Day celebration. All pre-K through 5th grade students participated in engaging environmental education sessions facilitated by the Elizabethan Gardens and FFES parent volunteers, focusing on the importance of conservation and environmental stewardship. On May 1st, over 100 students participated in Bike the School Day, traveling from Killable Hills Town Hall to FFES, a celebration of health, safety, and community spirit. The newly-formed FFES news crew visited First Flight High School, where they collaborated with the First Flight High School news team and gained hands-on experience with professional broadcasting equipment. Students even appeared on the FFHS News and worked alongside theater arts teacher Monica Penn. They also hosted guest visits from the U.S. Coast Guard, who delivered boat and water safety presentations to the 2nd and 5th graders, and the Sakumu Dance Troop from Ghana, who shared their traditional music, dance, and culture. Additionally, FFHS theater arts students performed the Book of Life for our kindergarten through 2nd grade students. The 5th graders had the opportunity to visit First Flight Middle School, where they explored the steam box and learned how to code drones in cars. We concluded this month with a successful Field Day on May 9th, supported by more than 60 parent volunteers. They are deeply grateful for the continued support of our families, staff, and community partners. These collaborative efforts are essential in creating a dynamic, well-rounded, and fun educational experience for all students at First Flight Elementary.
Hi, everyone. I'm Skylar, and I have First Flight Middle School and First Flight High School. The end of the school year is winding down, but the staff and students at First Flight Middle School are continuing to work hard and push through until the end. We just learned that our 2025 yearbook was selected for the Walsworth Gallery of Excellence Award. Our yearbook sponsor, Miss A.J. Adams, along with her 37 7th and 8th graders should be very proud of their hard work and dedication to creating such a wonderful piece. The process for creating such a successful yearbook includes voting on a student-created cover to guide the theme. Students check out cameras and attend multiple sporting events for every single sport and numerous STEM career development, chorus, band, and orchestra concerts, competitions, and field trips to make sure all students are included. They complete the layout of pages and see the process through until the end, including student and staff quotes, and lastly, they help market the yearbook. We also had three students who won top cash prizes for the essays they wrote for the Yan Hashua Holocaust Essay Contest that is sponsored by the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of the Outer Banks, along with the Jewish community of the Outer Banks. They were invited to a special remembrance ceremony over spring break where they got to read their essays. Our winners were Bailey Walker, Jesus Monica Vasquez, and Julianne Wooten, all 7th graders in Miss Stewart's ELA class. We are very proud of them. Lastly, we had five athletes compete in the NC Runner's School Middle School All-State Championship Track Meet in Concord, North Carolina recently. The girls were chosen based on being in the top level of competition in the state. Our participants were Kaia Smith, Emma Ryan, Ella Rae Reese, Emery Reese, and Emerson Glazer. Way to go, our Seahawks! For First Flight High School. First Flight High School has had a lot to celebrate recently. On Wednesday, April 30th, four of our students represented First Flight High School in the North Carolina High School State Mathematics Competition at Fayetteville State University, competing in one of three levels, Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3. We are very proud to share that Ben Cortez placed 6th in the state in Math 2, Harry Lipchak placed 7th in Math 2, and Wesley Robinson placed 7th in Math 3. Danny Trice also represented First Flight High School in Math 1. These students were coached by Professor Hasky, who led our math team students and helped students prepare for their future competitions using a variety of problem-solving strategies. In addition to academic success, our CTE department did a fantastic job hosting Financial Education Week. Students were engaged and learned a lot about real-world financial skills. We also recently celebrated a wonderful prom night at Proverbs Cove. It was a beautiful evening, and our students had a great time dancing and celebrating together. Finally, we want to thank the Board of Education for providing lunch to our teachers on Tuesday, May 6th. It meant so much to our staff, and it was amazing to see all the smiles and appreciation. You guys' support makes a big difference. Go Nighthawks! Thank you.
Good evening. It's kind of weird being up here knowing that this is my last time doing this, so try and make a good one. Alright, I'm Toby. I'm going to be going over the highlights from my district. Starting off with Nagshead Elementary. Nagshead Elementary had the best time honoring their teachers last week for Teacher Appreciation Week with a school-wide game of Survivor. Staff members had to spin a wheel in which they could be awarded a small grab-bag prize or a grand prize that included gift certificates for local establishments. Teachers also had to take part in a daily task. If they completed the task, they received points. The teacher with the most points at the end of the week was crowned Survivor Champion. Congratulations to Lori O'Neill, who swept the event with over 270 points. It was a great way to honor our educators and have some fun at the same time. NHES also welcomed the Sakumu Dance Troop from Ghana. This troupe performed for all of the students at NHES last week. A huge thank you for everyone who made this event possible. It was fantastic. Have a wonderful week from everyone at Nagshead Elementary School. Next is Manio Elementary. Manio Elementary would like to start by thanking the Board of Education for the teacher appreciation luncheon and the Dare Education Foundation for the banner and yard sign. Their staff truly felt the appreciation last week. Next, EOG Boot Camp is officially underway at MES. We have transformed our entryway and upstairs with camouflage decorations for our students and teachers with designated areas for classroom and student shout-outs. As it pertains to Boot Camp, our recruits in grades 3 through 5 will be working to strengthen their skills over the next three weeks to prepare for EOGs and earn a reward after testing is completed. Companies, the grade levels, will set a weekly goal to earn a star for great behavior in the classroom and the cafeteria, as well as math and ELA review activities. Platoons, the classes, will compete in skill drills, which are relay games, each Friday to review weekly Power Words. Recruits in grades kindergarten through second will participate in basic training to prepare for end-of-year M-class testing and join skill drills each Friday to cheer on their buddy class. Also, parent and family engagement continues to be a targeted school goal that we look to innovate annually. Most recently, we successfully completed Duke Science Night on campus. Annual Family Math Night at our local Piggly Wiggly and Foodarama grocery stores have partnered with the Child and Youth Partnership for a student and parent teaching event focused on resiliency. We are also looking forward to starting new traditions and have collaborated with Manio High School to host a cap-and-gown senior walk-through on May 20th. Thank you, Ms. Bridgers and Mr. Luciana, for all of your help. Last but not least, please join me in congratulating Mr. Ten Gordon as Teacher of the Year, Megan Fox as Classified Employee of the Year, Mr. Yakitis as Beginning Teacher of the Year, Mr. Mark Kaiser as ASEP District Employee of the Year, and Lindsay Bailey for School Nutrition Employee of the Year. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Spencer Twyford, and I have the highlights from Manio Middle School and Manio High School. Manio Middle School would like to thank the Rona Geilen Women's Club for donating a bench to our garden. The bench is made up of recycled bags they collected. It takes about 100,000 bags to make one bench. Manio Middle School also announced our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Deja Seelock, and our Classified Employee of the Year, Mrs. Amy Moore. Both well-deserved. As we move into EOG prep season, we have begun before- and after-school test prep tutoring, which have been well-attended. Mrs. Hart, with the support of her fellow PE teachers and exploratory teachers, held our annual American Heart Association fundraiser, where the kids raised over $2,000. Great job. MMS will have their Spring Musical Concert on May 13th at 6:00. MMS Braves and softball teams are number one in our conference, and MMS will be hosting the playoffs. Finally, MMS is thankful and appreciative of our teachers and staff. We cannot brag enough on them. Thank you to the Board of Education for helping celebrate them. Next up, Manio High School. As the school year draws to a close, we are thrilled to celebrate a wave of outstanding student achievements. In math, our students demonstrated incredible talent at the regional math contest, securing two-team victories in both Math 3 and Comprehensive Math. Individually, Finn Schultz earned first place in Comprehensive Math, and Finn Davis achieved second place in Math 3. Furthermore, Sarah Marshall-Gallup represented our school with distinction at the state math contest, achieving an impressive fourth place in Math 3 at the state level. Our students also showcased their insightful writing in the Jewish community of the Outer Banks Holocaust Remembrance Essay Contest, with Reagan Sharad earning second place and Kevin Gatalinski securing third place. We are so incredibly proud of our students and our students' artistic accomplishments in this year's Women's Club Art Competition. Their talent was recognized at the local, district, and state levels. Notably, Ashton Tinsley placed for Digital Enhanced Photography, Aubrey Shannon for Natural Craft, and Ellie Hill for Sculpture. They all achieved first place at the state level. Daisy Bruiser also demonstrated remarkable versatility and talent, earning recognition across multiple categories and levels. We are also proud of our MHS students, who have been a part of Dare County Team Court for the past three years. Dare County Team Court was the 2025 winner of the NC Governor's Volunteer Service Award. We appreciate our students' dedication to this program. In other school news, the National Honor Society will welcome 30 new members during an induction ceremony tomorrow, Tuesday, May 13th. Finally, for the third consecutive year, MHS is pleased to offer free athletic physicals to student athletes. Thanks to our continued partnership with Outer Banks Family Medicine of Manio, this will be held on May 22nd from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Fairbanks. I'm representing Cape Hatteras. At Cape Hatteras Secondary School, the past month has been nothing short of amazing for the students of Cape Hatteras, filled with a variety of engaging activities and accomplishments. We are proud to announce that two of our talented students, Max Cirrus and Quinn Pharaoh, participated in the 1A Regional Trackevent held at Northside High School, both earning personal records in their respective events. A special congratulations to Max Cirrus, who will be representing Cape Hatteras in the 1A State Championships Meet this weekend in Greensboro, competing in the 3200-meter race. Our Cape Hatteras Secondary School baseball team showcased their determination and sportsmanship in the second round of the state playoffs against the top-seeded Voyager Academy. While they did not secure the win, the team played with incredible heart, earning themselves a commendable season filled with growth and teamwork. In an exciting development, Cape Hatteras Secondary School was visited by representatives from the North Carolina Coastal Federation and the North Carolina Sea Grant for a site development and aimed at exploring a potential living shoreline base to hide behind the school. Our students actively participated in taking measurements and observations, showing great enthusiasm for the opportunity to engage in cultivating our shoreline environment. This partnership with North Carolina Sea Grant, oh goodness, I lost my place, and the NC Coastal Federation promises to enrich the students' inner learning experiences. Finally, last week, Cape Hatteras proudly hosted its Senior Celebration, a heartfelt event dedicated to recognizing our seniors and their future college and career aspirations. Thanks to the unwavering support of our community, Cape Hatteras students were awarded approximately $340,000 in scholarship money. I want to note that is insane. This remarkable achievement underscores the dedication and commitment for our community to investing in our future students. We are deeply grateful for the continued support from our community members, which plays a vital role in helping our students reach their goals.
Hello, I'm Caroline Fuller. Cape Hatteras Elementary School would like to begin by extending our sincerest gratitude to the Dare County Arts Council for bringing the Sakumu Dance Troop to Hatteras Island. Their vibrant performance of traditional and contemporary Ghanaian dance and music offered our students a unique cultural experience that many would not otherwise have the opportunity to witness. This event broadened our students' global perspectives and enriched our school community. In addition, although we were unable to participate in the regional Science Olympiad Tournament this year, our staff and students demonstrated remarkable adaptability and collaboration. Mrs. Kristen Gray, our instructional technology facilitator and Science Olympiad sponsor, partnered with Mrs. Jessica Polk, the CHSS Science Olympiad sponsor, to organize an onsite Science Olympiad competition. In this very special event, CHSS Science Olympiad students took on leadership roles by coaching and judging our elementary students, fostering mentorship and a love of science across grade levels. We are proud of these opportunities that support both cultural enrichment and academic growth for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, students. Appreciate all the hard work and updated information you gave us tonight. And the board is going to take a short recess at this time. I'll call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is approval of the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the Consent Agenda.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rooker. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. So we have Consent Agenda. We'll turn it over now to Ms. Fallon with the reports on the items of information.
Alright, good evening again, board.
All right. Good evening again, board. Um, I am here just to provide a report about a new curricular program that we started this year in Dare County. Um, so I just wanted to share a little bit, and I do have a couple of students that are going to join me this evening uh, to talk a little bit about sports management. And my two students are Abby Miles, Abby's here, and Haley Routen. Abby is a student at First Flight High School, and Haley is a student at Manio High School. So I'm going to talk a little bit about sports management, and then I'll, I'll get them to share their insights. Um, so I wanted to just start with, am I clicking? Can you do that for me? Thank you. Oh, there we go. So, um, when I first came to the district, had some conversations with our PE teachers and our athletic directors about sports management and running that through our athletic curriculum with a focus on some of the things listed here, really looking at the management and operations side behind athletics. Um, there's lots of career opportunities for students beyond, you know, being a pro football player or a basketball player. Right? So if you're, if you have that love for athletics, what can you do with it? Um, so we went and worked on a curriculum, and what those students did was a focus on the event planning and how to execute. Uh, we're going to have host games today, uh, sports marketing projects, communications with the community, uh, with teachers, staff, other students, um, the facility operations and management, equipment inventory with their sports, and then internships or job shadowing opportunities, all wrapped into one. Um, we actually, um, if we'll go to the next slide, use two separate models here in the district for this new curriculum. And I allowed those schools to have some autonomy to decide what would be a good fit for them. Uh, it's the first year we've run this, so we wanted to see, okay, uh, let's see what happens. Uh, what will provide the most robust opportunities for students? So Manio High School ran theirs as a standalone course, um, and I believe they had, uh, I didn't write down the enrollment number, but they had a really good enrollment, and it was a really good fit with that time period. Uh, First Flight High School and Cape Hatteras Secondary School, they ran their sports management through an internship, uh, through a partnership with CTE. And the reason they did that is they wanted to open up opportunities throughout the school day, not just during one designated bell, to explore that curriculum. So, the beauty of the internship was you could have students there in the morning, uh, working on things, and then a different group, uh, maybe in the middle of the day and in the afternoon. Um, so we found that, believe it or not, both models worked and were very successful. Um, so we've talked a little bit about opening up some of those internship opportunities uh, with sports management, um, at Manio High School as well, um, as they build their master schedule. I am going to give our student, um, uh, opportunity to share a little bit of feedback, but our next steps, uh, with this, so this was the first year we ran it. I've already talked to athletic directors, and they've got lots of ideas on how to make this better, but really expand those opportunities, the things they learn, learn about, to officiating. I know that there's a need with parks and recreation, always is, on officials. Um, so we're going to look at that and enhancing those partnerships with our community uh, as they host events and, um, and do different things in Dare County. Uh, we're going to expand the internship model, as I mentioned earlier, uh, look at, uh, maybe more guest speakers and field trips, really looking at how technology is used in sports and how our students, uh, can help support some of that work for our schools with marketing and promotion, and sports journalism specifically has been discussed. And again, uh, looking at helping students understand compliance standards uh, that are associated with athletics. And I promise you, it's not as simple and easy as it looks. Uh, it gets really messy. And then, um, also exploring career opportunities that students may have, um, beyond being an athlete. So I'm going to let you talk a little bit about what you liked about it, okay? Because you, you did it year, year long, right? Have you done two?
I did the first semester and the second.
So she's been there all year. So you want to talk a little bit about what you learned?
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name's Abby Miles, and I'm a junior at First Flight High School. Um, I've played varsity basketball for the Nighthawks for three years, and anyone who knows me knows that I love athletics. When I joined this internship, my goal was to get an idea of what I wanted to pursue in college, and this has been the biggest thing to help sway my decision. As a representative for the Sports Administration and Management Internship, I'm honored to say that we have leveled up the athletic department from a student standpoint. Thanks to Dare County Schools, and thank you to Dare County Board of Education, who have done a great job offering students like myself more educational opportunities. In the fall, the other interns and I had organized and started a fall basketball league for anyone who wanted to play a couple of competitively fun games with their fellow classmates. Throughout the year, we have kept everyone informed by running social media accounts to have updates on our Nighthawk game days, score checks, and to track all our Nighthawk wins. This program has given me the opportunity to see a completely different side of how things work and helping me to understand the importance of organization and communication. Making schedules to accommodate other sports, schools, bus trips, and players take quite the bit of planning. I'm so grateful to be able to represent the student body in such a cared-for and special thing that so many people love. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. And I wanted to say I did have some other comments from students throughout the district. Um, one of the focus was on, um, how much they learned about maintenance of fields, about maintenance and accounting for equipment, um, and facilities. And so, um, again, we're excited to expand those opportunities here in Dare County. And, and some of the next steps were ideas that actually came from our students. So I'm excited about what's on the horizon for that. And Ms. Shannon Castillo, uh, joined me, just in case she had any questions about internships in general. I'm hoping to, uh, she and I are hoping to collaborate, um, this summer uh, to kind of kick off our next school year, talking a little bit about internships. But if there are any students out there listening or parents, um, if you've got an internship idea, talk to somebody at school, uh, talk to your CDC, um, and, and get in those. They're really great experiences for our students. So are there any questions?
No questions, but I'm bored. Ms. Fallon, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Abby, tell, tell us what the most eye-opening thing about this was. What, what did?
Um, I really liked seeing all the behind-the-scenes of all the sports and all the different athletic programs, seeing the playoff brackets and getting to just cheer on our teams all throughout the year.
So you thought people just showed up and played?
Well, yeah, with a little thought behind it.
Yeah, it's a lot. So, uh, again, thank you, uh, for giving us the freedom to explore different curricular opportunities for our students. I appreciate it, and I know our, our, um, folks in the district do as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Very good. Thank you, dear. All right. So one more addition to, uh, I think improving student safety in the district um, that I'm really, really excited about is, um, our periwether system. So I wanted to share a little bit about that with you and hopefully with the community. So what is periwether? Well, we have our own, uh, weather stations now here in Dare County, uh, for our own personal use. So the current status and some of those features, we've installed three weather stations in, uh, areas throughout, so we have one in Manio, we have one, um, in the First Flight community, and one in Buxton. Uh, actually, the one in Buxton is between the two schools, so we tried to get those centrally located based on periwether recommendations. Uh, we've updated our spring user list, and we will change those users, uh, throughout the year uh, so that we, um, have a broader access, if you will. Uh, we've customized the policies and notifications. Uh, we have our own personal meteorologists on standby to take calls, which is great. Uh, periwether also stores historical data, and it's both for general use at school and for athletics. So what it is, it's an app. If you're a user, you get the app. Um, it's really cool. Um, and I should have had a picture, I apologize. But all the weather stations also have cameras, so you can see the weather, um, as long as getting those readings. And, um, so, uh, the next slide kind of outlines some of those uses, and I'm just going to hit on those quickly. Um, it is for athletics, but it's for general school use, too. One of the things that was, uh, we sort of had a conversation about, and my children were all athletes. I have four kids. And I will remember distinctly having a conversation one day, and it was football season. And the question was, Mom, why can't we practice today? And I said, well, you know, they do the heat thing, and they do the wet bulb, and it's a certain rating, and you can't have practice. He said, well, we had PE outside fourth bell. Oh, yeah, but you weren't wearing pads and stuff. He said, well, we were running around the whole time. And I was like, you know what? He's kind of right. Um, so we really look for consistency, um, here in the district. So again, it gives you that weather updates. It comes straight to your phone. That weather update is personalized with our Dare County policies, so not only will it say what the wet bulb reading is, so nobody has to go out there and do that, that wet bulb anymore, but it tells you what our policy is and how you should respond. Uh, suspend play for 30 minutes. Uh, it also gives you readings on lightning strikes and what you should do. Um, I don't know if any of you have ever had to deal with that, where you used to have to, you know, you hear the thunder and you start counting and hope you don't get to 10. Uh, don't have to do that anymore, so that's exciting. Uh, but it really has customized our action plans for heat index, um, and all forms of weather, wind. And it helps make decisions about play outside for our younger kids. They have standards there, too, especially in our pre-K programs, on whether or not they can go outside for recess. And so it really will help across the district with some of those decisions and kind of, and provide that consistency that we need. We have already accessed the personal meteorologist related to game day, whether we should play or not, is it really going to rain? Uh, I know that one of our principals called, uh, the morning of the prom, uh, to find out what the weather was going to be, and, uh, they've been extremely accurate uh, with everything that we've reached out about. The other, and the last point I want to make is it provides that documentation, uh, related to compliance that is so important for us. We've actually already had to reference that as well. Uh, there was a concern about it being cold and, and hosting a, an outdoor event, and we were able to go back to periwether on that day, and we had our actual data that we used to make a decision, so that's stored for. So I'm really excited about it. And again, our users will change, um, throughout the year, um, especially as we go to the fall, winter, and spring sports. So I'll just, if you hear people talking about it, I wanted you to, um, have that information. Uh, we're hoping that we can add another level where, uh, some of the general information can be provided through the school's website. So that'll be our next step as well with that. Are there any questions about periwether?
Ms. Fallon, is this is for internal use only, or is this going to be something that the public can also look at?
Well, if we can get it on the website, there will be limited access for the public, yes. Yeah, so you won't be able to get the app, but you'll be able to log into Manio High School's website and see that periwether information.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. We haven't done that part yet. We're just trying to get our weather stations installed and our users, um, getting the policies updated through periwether. Wanted to make sure that those were doing what we wanted. I actually have a meeting, uh, with our athletic directors, uh, and some of the folks that helped us set up those standards to kind of get a, gauge where we are with it. But thank you for asking that.
Mr. Blackstock, we don't, we're, we're getting the weather stuff squared away.
Please buy that.
Yeah, since he's retiring, I don't know what's going to happen with that.
Any other questions from any board member?
I think he should bring you up the stations to replace you.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon.
Thank you.
Translation, his retirement's still costing you money, so.
Next item is unfinished business. However, we have no discussion this evening about unfinished business, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Hitch for the new business.
That's right. So we have several policies on here for first reading. Of course, that's not for action. That's just for first reading, and they will go through the policy process.
Good. Thank you so much. Uh, next item on the agenda is, do I, could I get a motion for Ms. Hitch to create a proposed resolution for salary increase for state employees by the Board of Education?
Sit.
Have a motion by Mr. Bray?
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Ms. Hitch, you'll start working on that, please?
Yes, sir.
This looks like it concludes our business meeting tonight. So what I'd like to do is start it with Ms. Fairbanks, if you would like to give our closing remarks.
Hello? Okay. I was like, what in the world? Um, I want to start off by thanking everybody. Um, reflecting on my last four years in high school and really just my entire life in Dare County, I've recognized that the reason that I feel like I'm successful is because I've been in a, a community where I am not only supported immensely, but also challenged. I think that all of my ideas and my mindsets and just everything is pushed by the people around me. That's all of you guys, the people right here, her, my family, community members. I mean, the first time that I heard Toby speak was him saying that his SAT score was awful, and it was significantly higher than mine. So, there's that. But I really just want to thank you guys for pushing me to be a better person and just challenging the way I think.
Okay. Hello, I'm Caroline Fuller. I want to start by just saying how grateful I am for this opportunity. I feel like I've learned so much about the community, the schools, and just overall how the school system runs, more than I would have learned in regular school. This has been a really immersive experience. I've learned so much. I'm so happy for the networking I've done here with the Board of Education and also the other high school representatives here. Yeah, I'm just really, really grateful. This has been a fantastic experience where I've learned so much. Thank you.
All righty. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to, uh, serve as student advisor this year. It's been an incredible experience to represent the students of our district and to have a seat at the table where real decisions are made. Your ability to listen, debate, and still come together to make thoughtful decisions shows a true commitment to our schools and our future. Being a part of this process has taught me so much about leadership, collaboration, and advocacy. Thank you again for giving me the chance to learn from you and to be a part of something that truly matters. And a special thank you to Ms. Fallon for organizing a lot of the stuff we do, especially all of us meeting together and, uh, the free lunch at Blue Moon. I love that. It's great.
I was at Cape Hatteras with me, and I thought I'm going to say, but.
I second the free lunch. It was really good. Um, serving as a student advisor to the board has been truly a meaningful experience for my high school journey. I want to thank you all for valuing our student voices and for allowing me to be a small part of the work that shapes our schools. As I graduate, I leave with a deep gratitude and great hope for the future of our education system because I've seen firsthand the dedication in this room. So thank you, guys. And a special thank you to Ms. Fallon, whose guidance and support meant the world to me this past year. You didn't just lead us, you taught us how to lead, how to listen, and how to believe in our own voices. The lessons you've shared will stay with me at, long after I leave this room. From all of us student advisors and students in all of the schools, we love you and we thank you for everything.
Ms., all right, tonight, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the members of the board for creating a space where students' voices are valued and for giving me to be, uh, giving me the opportunity to be part of it. Thank you to the educators, administrators, and staff across Dare County who show up to make a difference and build a better future for us all, especially Ms. Fallon. And thank you to my fellow student advisors for making this a fun and memorable, uh, memorable experience. I've learned so much working alongside all of you, especially Emerson. He taught me, the first time we met, what business casual meant. Yeah. That being said, I'm sad to go. It's been an honor, and thank you all.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity over this last 11 months. A big shout-out to Ms. Fallon for everything you do for all of us. As an inspiring educator, this has given me even more passion for my future, and I'm very excited. And in case anyone's wondering, there's 25 more days left.
What's that? Thank y'all. Do I say it, Mr. Brower?
I don't really have a whole lot. I, I wanted to say thank you, though.
I, I wanted to say thank you though to the student advisors. Y'all did a great job. And when you're going to graduation here in about three weeks or so, you'll see that it, it means a lot to us when you graduate. And I think I probably speak for everyone here on the board that if you ever need a reference or a letter of recommendation, by all means, just reach out to any one of us and we'll provide that for you, but thank you so much.
My turn. Your turn.
I do want to thank the student advisors and best of luck in your future. Especially want to say good luck to Toby. I've known Toby since he was eight years old and he showed up down the waterfront to learn how to sail. So I've known Toby for a long time. So best of luck to all of you. And that's all I have to say about that.
Well, first of all, I know most everyone has left that were mathletes, but congratulations, that's a huge accomplishment. I definitely would not have been in the mathletes crowd. So, okay, I see somebody in the back, but the students, um, that's impressive, but it's not just the students. It takes their teachers, their parents, it takes a lot of pieces and parts to pull something like that off. So I appreciate that a lot, seeing them. And my physical therapist daughter was the one, I didn't realize that. So that was pretty cool to see him here tonight. And then the thing I, to the student advisors, I've just enjoyed the heck out of getting to know y'all and see you and hear your perspective. And just to see you, I think I've seen Spencer the most at different places. I don't know how, he popped up everywhere I seem to be at schools and stuff, but I just think it's awesome to have the opportunity to have young leaders come in and have a voice in our schools like that. That, not everywhere has that. And so I have just been so impressed with y'all because not only have you came here with an agenda of things that were going on in the schools, you were probably athletes, you were scouts, you probably had jobs, you had other things going on that you do besides just showing up here for a meeting and pulling your information together is also a huge responsibility. So as each of you go off to college, which I didn't see any college in Alabama. I'm like, I'm really disappointed because I'm from Alabama, so, but that's okay. Y'all all are just going to be super successful. And like Mr. Brower said, if you need any referrals or references, please reach out to us because you deserve it. And you can make it for 20 something more days. It's, it's going to happen, it's going to be here before you know it. But enjoy this last couple of weeks in school with your friends and, and kudos to your parents and stepparents that are out there because they play a huge part of this as well. Without them backing you and helping you alongside the teachers, you probably wouldn't be where you are today. So be sure and give your mom and dad hugs.
Thank you. Mr. Bright? Thank you.
I would like to echo the appreciation to the student advisors. I'm, I'm really impressed and I'm glad that you guys are getting a head start on becoming the leaders we're going to be using tomorrow. We need you guys, keep you studying, keep hard work and be ready to save us when we're old. We appreciate you. Um, one other quick thing, Coach Williams, the good guys versus cancer, that's such an outstanding program. And they've put a lot of money into the community for our cancer patients. And I just wanted to say I appreciate that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Pigman? You're all sitting, y'all sit back for a minute. I didn't say.
Time limit, okay. I always enjoy seeing Commissioner Burris here at the meetings. Uh, I don't think he's missed a single one since I've been on the board. So I always, you know, it shows the dedication from the Board of Commissioners. Really appreciate them being here. Uh, our new executive director for the Dare Education Foundation, she's hiding in the back. She's been, she has kind of made a, a point to be at these meetings. She's dedicated to being here and hearing what's going on. So that's, that's definitely a positive thing. Love it. And the Dare Education Foundation is on a rocket ship right now, in my opinion. Student advisors, I've enjoyed y'all over these last few months. I see, I see Mr. Fleckenstein and Mr. Twyford, you know, a little more often being in the Manio side of things than I end up over there. And, uh, but it's, it's been a joy having y'all here and all the reports and everything that y'all bring to the table. And you definitely all have bright futures ahead of you. So just keep after it, y'all are doing great. You're going to do great things. Uh, the mathletes, I thought that was really cool and to take, you know, those kids, do what they've been doing all. Ms. Dawn Tillit in the back over there, yeah, she, yeah, you, you're not going to hide from me. And just doing what y'all have done with those children and being able to take them to the next level and get them to those competitions and everything and get them ready for it. Beautiful stuff, beautiful stuff. Um, it seems like, you know, we're wrapping up the athletic seasons right now throughout the schools. First Flight Middle School's lacrosse team, I think they went undefeated. The track teams from all the schools, they placed in regional and state competitions, they did really well. Manio Middle School softball team went undefeated. Uh, they had a game tonight, they played against River Road, they were successful. I got a message about that a moment ago, so they're advancing. Same thing with Manio Middle School's baseball team. And I believe Manio High School girls soccer team starting their state tournament tonight at Manio High School. Is that, I think that's.
First Flight is.
And First Flight is as well. Okay.
First Flight was up one, nothing just a few minutes ago.
Uh, okay. Good stuff. Um, Ms. Lisa Lloyd and I actually, we went to the after prom party that they had set up at the YMCA. Mr. Bassnight was in attendance in his pretty pink coat. Um, looked good, he looked really good. I think there's pictures of him floating around online, but regardless, um, that was a lot of fun. It was something I hadn't really seen before. It, I don't know that they really had a lot of that stuff going on when I was in school, but I mean, it was fun, wasn't it, Ms. Lisa? We had a good time. Uh, didn't stay too terribly long because it was late in the night for me, but, um, it was definitely something super cool. And I already told them, put me on the volunteer list for next year, so. I want to shout out to Ms. Jenny Gray of Cape Hatteras Elementary School. I went down there to deliver their Dare Education Foundation. Oh, you put a timer on.
Yeah. But times are three minutes.
Well, I'm not done, so you, I told you I'd get gummed up. Did that on purpose. Ms. Jenny Gray at Cape Hatteras Elementary School was, I, I met, I was dropping off their banner and the way she approaches her job is just phenomenal at that front office. Um, one last thing. Deputy Grover. Yeah, that's you. Come, come over here real quick, please. Will you please? Please, thank you. I went to the, Manio High School had their, uh, prom week things going on to where, you know, for safety and everything like that. And they did the mock car crash. And that was on Tuesday of prom week. And let me tell you something, the way everything was set up, it couldn't have gone any better, in my opinion. And I, I felt like you needed to be recognized. When I saw you here, I was like, oh yeah, she's going on my shout out list. Um, but I know that you helped orchestrate all that with state troopers, Manio, P D, Sheriff's Department, EMS, fire, everything like that. I mean, all the way down to just the kids in the cars. It was, it was really hard to watch. Um, I had to turn away a couple of times and just kind of be like, okay. But I, I felt like you needed to be recognized this evening. So we're very, very thankful and very, anybody, any of the other SROs out there need to take a page out of your book when it comes to, uh, putting those things together and putting that on. So thank you for doing that. I got more, but I'll stop.
All right, Mr. Payne?
Abby, this one's for you. To go along with the sports management. There's a movie called Moneyball. The Yankees were recruiting a young man and they looked at him and said, comes a time in which you can't play the kids game anymore. So what do you do after you can't play the kids game? You officiate. That's what I did for 35 years, officiated high school and college basketball. Had a ball doing it. Playing days were over. Still played pickup from time to time. So when you go to college and sports management, figure out a way to get kids your age interested in officiating. You can still be a part of the sport and have a ball doing it and make a good little extra income on the side. It's good seeing you again. Chad Williams. Great coach. The tournament he puts on is one of the best in the U S. Not only for this community, for basketball, but for kids, my mom died of cancer. So it, it means a lot to me. Hats off to Coach Williams and the phenomenal job and his team putting that tournament together. My apologies for good promotion. Tobias. Was in, um, he's going to beat you. Yes. Walked into Five Guys to get a hamburger one day and Tobias is sitting there with his mom eating a hamburger. Hey Tobias, what's going on? Tobias, tell us what you did on that day. You, you just happened to wake up one morning and.
Seriously? I went on a little bike ride with my friend.
And where did that bike ride take you?
Kitty Hawk to Hatteras.
So you just got on your bicycle and rode from Kitty Hawk to Hatters, all the way to the ferry dock, I think, right?
Yes, sir.
That beats you working out.
It does.
Yes. What, didn't you do something else that day? Or just ride the bike? Yeah, I mean, he just gets up in the morning, gets a couple of guys, we're going to ride down to Hatters Ferry docks.
I mean, I ate a good hamburger too.
Two years ago, this past December, Mr. Bassnight just came on board. I came on board and we looked at an article in, uh, the First Flight publication that comes out. And there was an article written about students not having a voice. I remember looking at Mr. Bassnight and going, we need to have students on the board. And we had the perfect person for it. As many board meetings that I sat in as, as a teacher and administrator in schools, it's been a breath of fresh air to have our students come in, give us their insight, their input, your intellect. And over the last two years, we've had some amazing students like yourselves be a part of our, our board. Thank you. Thank you very much. Keep riding that bicycle, Tobias. Lastly, the art show that we had about a month ago in Manio, uh, there are some great art pieces. I mentioned that, uh, at our last meeting. There's one photograph of the, um, Old Coast, Oregon, the Coast Guard station. That, that was on, on view for everybody. I contacted the student and I purchased it from that student because it was a great photograph and some great artwork that we talked about last. So hats off to Sarah Harrison at Manio for, for, for taking that photograph. It will hang in my house proudly. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Payne, Mr. Bassnight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To our, yeah, that's it, huh? Okay, I didn't mean it. Student board members, thank you. I meant what I said. We appreciate you more than you know. Mr. Brower said, if you need anything, you reach out. And, and that's exactly right. Let us know how we can help you. To the mathletes that were here tonight. Huge number of kids, non-athletic group that was recognized by the Board of Education for their academics. That's awesome. Um, Abby, thank you. If you can't figure out why we do what we do, tonight should have explained it to everybody. Cause it just sort of makes you go, yes, it's about kids. And, and all the rest of this stuff. We get lost too many times. And it's nights, nights like tonight that bring us back to this is why. And everybody needs to know that. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, I, I told the teachers, several of them face to face, I'm sorry, we've got to have a week for people to do that. Um, because the work that the people in our schools do goes far beyond thanks for what you do. So please know, everyone in Dare County Schools, you are appreciated every day for what you do. Um, tomorrow, COA's graduation. Um, I'm not going to tip the number because that would rain on somebody else's parade. But, uh, all time number of Dare County students graduating with an associate's degree, okay? And, and that number has gone up each year. Um, some of them happen to be sitting on the front row over here. Um, very proud of, of them doing that. Um, it's being moved, it's usually on the grounds at COA. It's being moved to First Flight High School's auditorium because of rain, um, at 11 o'clock tomorrow. And last weekend, a lot of college graduations. And we tend to think of, you know, college kids graduating. Y'all, we had a lot of staff that graduated last weekend with, uh, degrees, advanced degrees, um, and doctorates. And I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our staff members and former students and students, uh, who graduated last weekend. And, uh, we're happy to have you in Dare County and Spencer, hurry back with your degree. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. First of all, I'd like to say it's an honor to sit up here to serve as a board member to our students and staff and our community. I don't take it lightly. I appreciate every day an opportunity to give what's best for our students and that's what we're here for. Um, I would like to piggyback on the other board members to our student advisories. It's really nice to see the eyes and coming out, giving us an update. Um, and y'all's perspective, the schools showing the, the good of what's taking place. We know there's a lot of good and what y'all share with us each month is just a little bit. But thank you again. And I'm also excited to announce tonight that with the next upcoming, um, interviews, we're going to have the students involved with us. So they're going to be sitting at the table along with Mr. Payne, myself, Ms. Lloyd, um, to interview the next round of students taking their, their seats.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much. That's awesome.
This is going to be an honor to see the input. And also I feel like as I was there last year, I think it would give some of the students a little more comfortable feeling that. They, they're, they're peers. So y'all all knew when y'all had three adults up here, or several adults, but three on the board asking questions. I'm sure it was a little intimidating, but I think y'all's insight and, uh, knowledge will go forward. And, and I just want to say on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for, for doing what you've been doing for the last few months and stepping up to the interview process. It is a closing out year. Uh, it's amazing year for Dare County Schools. It's hard to believe it's been 2024, 25 already over with 25 days, as Mr. Twyford said. Uh, but you know, it's been outstanding, um, not only in the world of our athletics, but our special needs program, our transportation, uh, elementary, secondary, central office staff, custodians, cafeteria. You know, last week was Staff Appreciation Week and we cannot run our day to day operation without our staff. And we have amazing staff and we just can't say enough about all of our staffs. Um, peri weather, where was it go 10 years ago when I was Transportation Director? It certainly would have saved me a lot of time driving around this county and communicating, that's for sure. Uh, Mr. Burris, um, he spent a many hour last Friday at Kids Fest, our future students. Mr. Burris sat in that water seat for what, two and a half hours? It was, it was, it was right funny, it was a dunking booth. And, uh, we had, I think we had three commissioners signed up. It was, uh, Ms. Balance, Mr. Burris, and Mr. House. But I think Mr. Burris got, he picked a short straw. Cause he said, he sat there the longest, but watching those students come up and take that ball and hit that and seeing all that water come on, it was, it was amazing. And I want to thank the, uh, that program, the Child, the Kids Fest. It was, when the gate was there getting ready to open at 9:30 was then, I think about a 10 minute period. They had 500 that came in within a 10 minute period. Last year, the number was close to 1,700, um, that went through that all day. It was from 9:30 to 12:30. I haven't got the number, um, the total number this year so far, but what amazing. I mean, seeing these little kids and I miss it, they're our future and watching them just play, have a good time. So I wanted to reach out and thank the Kid Fest for that to take place. That is all I have. Do I have a motion onto the floor to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bright, the second. Mr. Payne, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? We're adjourned.